And open the meeting Monday, March eighteenth. Four, six oh one P M. For selectmen town of Oakham. Stand for the pledge. Your allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have blocks on my lips.
W R two four dash one nine.
I move we accept the warrant W R two four dash one nine.
Second.
No favor.
Bye.
Bye. Next up is approved minutes and we don't have any for this meeting.
Next one.
Yeah. Public session, buddy, here for public session. State your name.
Lisa Taylor Eastwell Rose. I watched the budget meeting last week. And at the conclusion of the treasurer collective session, she stated her salary account was going to run out of money. The chair stated that's because we paid the prior one vacation time when she left six days into the new fiscal year. That statement is not completely accurate because.
What is inaccurate?
Well, if you took my pay, my three weeks vacation, which I earned and which gets paid out.
They agree.
Don't make it sound like the budget came up short.
Don't tell me what to make it sound like.
Well, I think the fact that forty two oh five was paid out of that account for the interim treasurer collector and forty five dollars was paid out of that account for the current treasurer collector is why that account is short. Not because vacation time was paid out to me.
Did you budget for your vacation time when you were leaving?
It's part of the budget. I was salaried. I got the same amount every week, whether I was here fifteen hours or twenty hours. So when I took a week off, I got a week's pay of what my weekly salary was. Well, it was an inaccurate statement. And I just wanted that clear. And I also would like to address the comments that Peter and Diane made regarding the departure of the current assessor. They were in that meeting.
They're not here tonight, though.
They need to be here for me to address their comments.
What are you addressing?
What what they explained is going on. That seven employees have left employment in this town in a very short period of time.
Yeah.
And that's concerning.
Yeah.
Well, it's concerning. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned.
Oh, good, good. So am I. I'm very concerned about it. I'm well aware of it, too.
Yeah.
Last meeting, you said you went.
Excuse me, who are you?
You're off the red nosed reindeer. Brad Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you.
At the last meeting, you said I knew nothing of it.
Of what?
That can't be of of all these people leaving or the.
No, 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 that's not.
Or the assessor leaving.
I knew nothing about the assessor leaving. That's what we were discussing. Don't expand it. I knew all the other people. I did not know the assessor was leaving. I don't think any of us knew the assessor was leaving.
I think it's because nobody paid attention. And I think that that gentleman, the newest board member was aware because he didn't say that he didn't know. I carefully watched the meeting. He was aware. So.
I was aware, but I have a personal relationship and the Board of Assessors does not report to the Board of Selectmen. It's not my obligation to report something that I find out from a friend to the Board of Selectmen in an official capacity.
I can understand that. I can understand that.
Correction on your pay. I'll agree with you.
I would also like to mention that with no assessor in that office, when it's time for the bill file in two months to get loaded, if there's nobody here to do that bill file and the bills don't go out by law, you can't collect that money till November first.
Right.
So it's concerning.
I agree. I know she's there tonight.
Yes, her board is meeting.
Thank you.
Lucy DeLeo is online. Lucy DeLeo is on.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
Guns?
Yep.
Barbara Roschinsky, Northfield Road. Just to kind of say to you that we would like to be able use the voting room again for Zumba because we will be homeless as of next Monday again. We have another venue hopefully in the works, but we're not sure. So it would be this room for the month of April was kind of okay for May, I believe.
I think as long as the chairs are taken away and put back how they were since the meeting, the selectman meetings are on Monday nights.
Let's see.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'll see.
Who's there room to begin with?
Right.
Well, and it may not come to pass. We're trying to work out some things.
And the exercise class will still be in the Braintree then. And that hasn't changed. They're still happy to have us down there.
Right.
Any chance that we could send Zumba down there?
They have, what happens when you go and you talk to different venues is that if they have something scheduled already, it would mean us changing the day, the time, all of that, and we'd lose members because all members that are currently working out put that on their schedules as the time to go and they may not have other options. So we'd like to keep it at the Monday.
Okay.
In order to do that.
Thank you, Barbara. Next up, fire chief Tim Howe.
Thanks, here. I just wanted to kind of update the board on the doings of the fire departments, things going on. Some issues, things like that. A couple of things I didn't even think of, but real quick, I'm officially told you, we did get ten or eleven thousand dollars in grants for airbags. So that's coming. We're going to be getting our six or seven thousand dollars for, again, the schools and the senior center doing those kind of events, the public events, the open house stuff like that. So grants are good. I did just apply for a FEMA E F G grant for Jaws of Life for seventy two thousand five hundred. We won't hear for that till October, November, sometime in that timeframe, they'll hear about that. So we'll go with the grants. I wrote this. Yeah, I'm gonna read it just I didn't want to forget anything because there's kind of a lot going on. So I apologize. I normally don't read. I kind of wing it. I didn't want to miss anything. So a quick state of department from March eighteenth, twenty twenty three. I wanted to come before the board tonight to give an update in the status of the Oakham Fire Department to spell some rumors that are running rampant around town due to misinformation. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four have been a busy time for the department. Our recruiting efforts have paid off, and for the first time in years, the department is close to full strength. We sent three members to the Call of All Academy last year. One member went on his own through college and one member is currently enrolled now. Oakham and the strongly towns are organizing a regional class. And Oakham has three to four more members interested in attending. Having this training allows us to provide a rapid attack to any fire incident town both properly and most important safely. As the board is the way up, the town voted and appropriated funds to replace our nineteen eighty seven tanker. As of late February, the last day of equipment was delivered and the truck is now one hundred percent complete. The project has come in under budget and earlier than was expected. The final numbers are as follows. Through the engine bond account, eight hundred thirty two thousand, six hundred forty four dollars and thirty nine cents. The equipment money, eighty one thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars, eighty nine cents, which brings us to a total of nine hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred seventy five dollars and twenty eight cents. That's thirty five thousand, six hundred twenty four dollars and seventy two cents under budget. Unfortunately, what should be a joyous occasion for the department has been muddled with rumors and gossip. And I want to make sure as always, Oakham Fire Department provides the facts. Rumor number one, the town was not aware we were keeping the old tankers. Made it clear, town meetings and informational sessions were not the old tanker for several reasons. First, it did not meet any N P A safety requirements that modern fire wrappers need. To me, there is no price that can be put on keeping the members of the Oakham Fire safe. Second, the failed inspection and pump testing every year was getting more challenging and costly to keep in service. Third, there was no room in the station. A truck containing water needs to be kept indoors without base space. It could not be kept inside. If it did not meet or pass safety standards, why keep it? We don't need a big fleet, just a modern safe fleet. The truck did not carry any equipment, as mentioned many times in numerous meetings. It was only seats for two members, no space for air packs, only two legs of hose, no ladders, no tools. The new truck can show up by itself and do everything needed to fight a fight. Rumor number two, the old tank was worth seventy two hundred thousand dollars. We are bound by certain municipal rules when it comes to disposal of town equipment. We cannot just sell equipment. It must go through a sealed bid or approved bid process. The Oakham Fire Department uses municipal bid for surplus equipment. The old ambulance that everybody thought would sell for ten to fifteen thousand dollars sold for thirty five hundred dollars. There's a limited market for old fire trucks that cost a lot to modify or repair into another type of vehicle such as a dump truck. By trading it, we were guaranteed a fair amount. Last week, I did some research to find out where the old truck ended up. The old tanker went to a small town in Pennsylvania for twenty four thousand dollars. The truck sold for twenty four thousand dollars from a dealer after it had work done to get to pass inspection. It's being used solely as a tanker to provide backup to the primary tanker, which by the way is a twin door in nineteen eighty seven. It is not an all purpose truck, but will be serving them by just shuttling water, a luxury we do not have. Trading the overall tanker low with the total amount being financed, as chief, it made more sense to finance the eight eleven two oh six, which was the base truck, other than the eight twenty four by taking off that fifteen. I have no means of a financial expert, but the less interest we pay over the ten years is better for the taxpayers. Rumor number three, I didn't get real costs before the vote. Rumors again of surface, I never got real costs before the town meeting, which is very true and for a good reason. Buying a fire truck is not like buying an item in the store. There was no base price. Everything from the number of letters in your town named a letter to the number of tools you must mount changed the price. Hose types, size fittings and valve preferences all change the price. Every day that passes, prices like engines, transmissions, even tires fluctuate until you lock in a contract. The numbers we came up with were for a spec truck. It the spec truck, if it was going to be available, if the truck had sold prior to our vote, which it almost did, we would have got a lot less truck and it would have cost us a lot more money. We obtained quotes from several vendors, which I've attached to the back of this, for base models that I used to obtain the number for town meeting. A good example of this is when a town builds a new building, they may borrow eight point five million, only use eight point two, but they had the extra unforeseen costs. At the end, we have a one year bond here. When this is closed out, hopefully we can, we can change that and finance that loan out. All equipment was priced out when we presented to the FinCom and I was able to return money by being financially responsible. Rumor four, I have a slush fund with all the extra money. As mentioned above, there is money left over from the project. We saved on a few ways. I bought cheaper radios. I found some missing L A's equipment from other trucks and I spread it out under the current truck to allow to keep costs down. While we would all like to drive a Cadillac, we realized all we need is a Chevy. We tried to keep that in mind when this project came together. Not only do I have a life safety responsibility to taxpayers, I have just as important financial responsibility as well. All the money is still in accounts. I leave it up to the FinCom and the board. They close it out the best way to meet the financial well being of the team. Rumor number five, this one kind of blows my mind. I purchased car one for thirty eight thousand, seven hundred sixty three dollars, seventy five cents. In March of twenty twenty four, rumors are flying around town. I did not get a good deal on the car. If that was a concern, that should have been said back to me in twenty twenty one, but instead it's said behind my back over two and a half years later. If anyone could find a new Chevy Tahoe cheap in thirty eight thousand dollars, I would be more than happy to buy it from that place if it was a vendor we could use. Rumor number five, everyone knows this town hall is an old building where everybody can get everything. The reason I bring this up is many people talk and they don't know who's in the other room working. When hearing the rumors and misinformation about the tanker, again, the new tanker, again, the department in my name were mentioning things that made me leave town wondering why I'm in this. My primary concern is never waver. First is the safety of each member of the Oakham Fire Department. I lose sleep at night trying to ensure all members are trained properly, have the training, the tools and knowledge to go home safely. A response that will never change. My second responsibility is to each resident of this town, both in time of emergencies as well as the fiscal responsibility to run the department in a way that is responsible and sticks to a reasonable budget. I will admit I've been soured by a small group who make continuous attacks on my character in the department. I am a firm believer that every person has a right to their opinions and I respect them. I encourage any resident in this town to reach out to me for in person discussions about decisions, rules and procedures. I feel as chief, there's no way you can know everything and always and I don't always make the right decision. I look for criticism, new ideas and better ways of doing things. I will respect people that disagree with me and always treat them with respect and never talk behind their backs or spread false information. The undeniable truth is no firefighter is ever too busy to be kind, respectful or fit, and I live by that. While I can take criticism, I will not allow rumors to be said about dedicated members of this department. And that's why I'm here tonight to ensure these rumors are stopped. It is well known and rules do not have to be true to do harm, and I will not let that happen. As always, I have continued to give a hundred percent to this town in my position. I work with the Board of Selectmen to ensure the needs of the town in a manner. I'm sorry, I will work with the Board of Selectmen to ensure the needs of this town are met in a manner that adheres to all rules and regulations. There'll be times when we disagree, but at the end of the day, having an open, clear relationship with the board and the citizens will allow for good decisions to be made that will allow Oakham Fire to continue to grow and serve the town. Respect and submitted. Apologize for being long-winded.
Thanks, Tim. The I'm looking at the Tahoe.
Yep.
Yeah, it says G P C vapor and that's the state bid, right?
State bid, yep. But any city of town pays, we all pay the same.
Same price.
Currently, they're forty two.
And that was during COVID when you couldn't get a vehicle.
What numbers? Again.
I think it was very complete. Very well presented. And I think it cleans up some misunderstandings that have been passing around town for a while. Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
I have not had any concern about the fire chief for his department. And I think as the board responsible for supporting the fire chief, the fire chief should know that he has the full support of the Board of Selectmen and that any further rumors certainly are not coming from the Board of Selectmen and should be disregarded.
I agree. You always have our full support.
Do a great job, Tim. There's not much more I can say and I really appreciate you bringing the truck in under what we allocated to.
And I do, like I said.
It doesn't always happen.
I look to the board for how I was you work that out with the FinCom and the board for them.
If I may, Paul Ross Schutz from Gaffney Road. I'm not on the finance committee now, but all the time that I spent on the finance committee with Tim as chief, the communication between the finance committee and the fire department was always very open and it was very two way. And and discussions brought up good points and negative points. And everybody, everybody was well informed, you know, between the finance committee and the fire department's needs, so I I give him a huge amount of credit for what he's done.
Thanks, Paul. On the fire.
Not my time.
So. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, police chief, Gary.
I'd like to start off by saying grants are in and we're starting to receive items from the grants. So far, we have the body on cameras and with some difficulty, we're getting them rolled out. Hopefully April first, that's our projected date. We have all the software now. Policy is trim cut. I think we submitted the bills for those already for C M Geeks and in the the vendors. You should all have a copy of the policy if you want to just quickly read through it if you have any questions. It's a very thorough, it took myself and another person about six months to draft this up back and forth with the attorneys. Very well thought out. A lot of it's been proven with other departments as well.
It's what all the towns use.
Some of it is, some of it was, you know, suggestions from E O Ps, suggestions from attorneys, stuff we came up on our own, thinking through the the whole process as far as storage, availability, who could see it, who can access it, Freedom of Information Act requests, that's that's all in there.
I think you should look it over for next week and take a vote to accept it next week.
Yeah. Okay. Time to read or digest it.
Also, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but I did get the radar sign set up. I've been communicating a lot on Facebook through our Facebook page with the police department and unrestricted page. It's interesting, the comments you get. People think that it's a contest to see who can get the highest speed. However, that's not in reality. But the sign is out there right now. It's in the testing phase. We have to put that down on one forty eight for approximately three weeks. Upload the date of the D O T and we'll have to do that three, three or four separate times a year on the road of their choosing. And then it's ours to use wherever we want after that. So I'll be moving that around town. We'll schedule different areas. If anybody hasn't seen the sign, you might want to take a ride by. It's it's pretty nice. Let's see, what else did we get? So we received the governor's highway safety grant and we also received a handheld radar unit for that as well. So they give you X amount of dollars for overtime to run officers for radar assignments. And they give you the equipment to do that. We just had our audit last week. First of all, we had in three years. All our records were perfect and the auditor didn't spend much time with us. She was in, checked out paperwork, thanked me and left. So that's all in order. Still waiting on the Motorola radios. They're being manufactured. I asked what the holdup was for the grant and I was told that there's a high demand right now for radios because of the grants. And we were in line to get ours unforeseen future date. So I don't know if it's in the next month or two. I'm hoping anyway. Taser was the same. They they're thinking that I'll get the tasers in the next four to six weeks. So when we do, we'll get the training completed for that. And we'll deploy those as well.
You already have tasers, so these are the replacement ones.
Right. So what happened with the old tasers where the contractor Axon no longer has the liability insurance to come to the old tasers. So they were coming to an end, whether we wanted to or not. In other words, if we use them, we were on our own liability wise. If something went wrong with them, they were not going to back up their product at all because of the things that. So those are for all intents and purposes can be crushed. They're no longer going to be used or utilized after we get the new tasers. And obviously, because there's no liability from the manufacturer to cover it. So good thing the grant came in when it did.
Everybody's going to be retrained.
Yeah, it's a different style taser. If you could deploy two, two different shots. So in one side, you can put like a twenty five foot cord and the other side, you can put a twelve foot cord. So if you're close, you can use the twelve foot cord or the twenty five foot cord, or if you don't hook up for N M I, which is the muscular electrical shock, then you can shoot them again with the second cartridge. It's not the highest technology that they offer, but right now it's the best. They have taser tens. We're getting taser seven. Taser tens are not field proven yet. I guess they're still having some issues with them. But the sevens will be around for a long while. They're not going to phase those out anytime soon, so it's good to go with those.
Kind of training goes with the body cameras.
So we're going to be doing some training tomorrow night and it's going to be mostly policy and use. So when the buck, the camera's on your body, how to use it, when to engage it, go over the entire policy. When you're done with your shift, how to download the information back onto the hard drive. So we have a four terabyte power that we're going to be storing all our own video footage for. And that way we have it. It's not in the cloud. We can it's self contained. That was part of the grant, too. They wouldn't allow us to have a cloud based storage. I don't know why. It must be some
security.
Security or legal reason why, but for whatever reason, we had to have our own storage so that was included in the grant. Matter of fact, that training is going to be happening tomorrow night.
Are all the officers going to be there for the training or are you doing it in sections?
No, most of them will be there. I think those who can't make it tomorrow night will get a training on another day. Rollout will be April first, so if they don't get their training by April first, they're probably not going to be able to go on a patrol. So the two full time officers are basically already trained. The path timbers are the ones that need to get in and get your training.
The use of the cameras, it says all enforcement encounters where there's at least a reasonable suspicion the person has committed or is committing criminal activity, that includes traffic stops.
Yes. Also, anywhere there is no expectation of privacy. So there doesn't really have to be a crime. If there's no expectation of privacy, anybody can record at that point.
Okay.
What I I would recommend that the community be informed of this new technology that's being used. Is there any plan to do any community education?
Yeah, I thought I would, you know, advertise our product on our webpage and, you know, educate people as to what it is, how it works, when we'll be utilizing it. So we're going to draft up a, an announcement to the public. Similar to what I did with the radar sign.
Maybe there'll be less interesting.
Less confidence.
Although probably not.
Well, it's interesting, though, some departments are doing away with the body cams and I don't understand it. Worcester was talking about doing away with the body cameras. But there's an outcry by the public for them not to wear them. So that's contrary to what it used to be.
That's true.
Just a stupid question. On a medical, do you have to be recording on a medical call?
No, no, because a couple of reasons. I mean, if it's something that may have been criminal and it's a medical criminal activity that resulted in a medical, I would say yes. But I would say no on a normal medical because it's invasion of privacy and could be a violation of head phone.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any process of auditing? The, uh, it says when, um, all attempts will be made to do this. Um, shoot, uh, is there gonna be any auditing to know when somebody isn't capable, isn't able to activate? Will you be looking at any logs to see, okay, this person did this many stops, but how come X number of them weren't utilizing the, um, the camera?
Yes, there'll be, uh, there'll be some auditing. Um, it'll be random and it'll be, so, I know there was a big discussion about that with the attorneys. And they said that if you're picking on one person, you really can't do that, so you have to randomly audit certain cameras. And you can also view them. Uh, as, as a supervisor, you can view them anytime you want. So if I think somebody, you know, was not turning on their camera, I could just come right out and ask them why not. Do an audit of their camera, see if they're actually following policy. But that has to be done at random for, you know, unless there's question.
Do we know if, um, uh, community town councils have been involved in reviewing these? I only ask because it's really the, the town's liability. Um, and although I, I am sure between all of the resources that the chief has used, should the town council, um, also have a chance to make sure that we're fully protected?
Certainly, if you wanna pay for the attorney to go through it and take a look at it, I don't have any objection. However, you, you should know that EOPS, Executive Office of Public Safety, has approved this policy. And we wouldn't move forward without it. Don, I'm sure is familiar with the process.
The, the other thing, what you're saying is, we should probably send this to Maya. Just have them, we'll give it a once-over, make sure.
Yeah, they would, I would agree with Don on that. That's probably the better way.
They're the ones ensuring us. So.
So if we had a, a complaint of discrimination, uh, Maya would be covering us for that?
About general liability insurance.
Complaints, if any, which we don't really get those types of complaints, will go down as a result of the body on the cameras. Uh, the amount of complaints and follow-up that you get from the citizens after you've worn a camera tend to decline rapidly.
Cause it's recorded.
Correct. Everything's recorded. They know that. They can't lie to you. They can't go back and say something else happened that didn't. And the other thing you have to warn the public of is, uh, perception, because it's only one camera perception. And sometimes, if you're involved in an incident and something happens and you're only seeing it from your point of view, even the camera only sees your point of view. If you have other cameras, there are times you can pick up other parts of the incident that weren't seen. So if an officer would have read a report and say, this happened, and it was in his peripheral view and it wasn't in the cameras, now you have an issue. And, uh, that's all, that's all covered, so. But the camera itself usually satisfies that and you don't have an issue with, uh, citizens coming back on you because they're afraid of what's recorded. Hence why departments are doing away with the cameras, because there's an outcry of the citizens saying that they don't want them to have the cameras. Not that it has anything to do with here, but the university, Clark University, first thing that they did when we got the cameras was, student bodies came out and said that they didn't want us to have them. They wanted to defund the project, remove that from the police and take the money themselves. Down there was about a hundred and twenty thousand for the, for the camera program. They wanted it. We went and got it. Before we got to deploy it, they wanted to defund it and pull it away from us. Because I think they realized at that point, it was against the narrative.
Going forward, you get the grant to pay for storage equipment and all that. Going forward, is that something you need to add into the budget?
It may be. I'm gonna have to wait and see for the first year what it's actually gonna cost us for the, so that we have four terabyte. And according to the, uh, according to the policy, you know, we can have up to a year's storage on certain things, maybe years of storage on cases. So I wanna wait and see exactly how much of it we can store, how long it's gonna take and how much of the memory it eats up before we need to buy more. Budgetarily, that, you're right, it may be kind of a concern later on down the line. But that's, we're gonna have to wait and see, I guess.
Does CM Geeks know about that?
Yes. So what contracted with CM Geeks for the four-terabyte tower, they set it up, they helped us with the software. Download was rather difficult, so we had to involve them. It's never easy. And so setting up the, uh, download and actually getting the, uh, redaction software, it was supposed to come with the program, it didn't. We had, you know, half the program downloaded. It was a, it was a mess. So we had to have them help and we wanted calling and I think Kevin's got seven or eight hours collectively on the phone with the vendor, trying to straighten it out. And that, that gives you a better understanding of exactly what was going on and why it's taking longer than we anticipated.
Okay, what else?
Uh, as far as calls go, uh, we've had one serious call recently, we, a young man with a firearm. Uh, he's currently still incarcerated. It was an incident up on Ensign Road where, uh, three individuals were intoxicated and they were harassing each other. One person said, I'm going to bed, you went to bed. They shook his trailer and you gotta laugh, but they threw a goat in on him. They opened the door, threw a goat inside the trailer. He didn't like that, so he came out shooting. Uh, the officers involved did an excellent job. I got called, I, I arrived at the scene just as he was being taken into custody. And, uh, you know, I really wanna thank Ruttland and Berry Police Departments as well as Officer Here for doing an excellent job. Nobody got hurt. And, uh, they did it by the numbers. Something to be proud of.
Who'd sent us an email about?
Yeah, so, uh, as I had stated earlier, we'd like to, uh, use some ARPA money to hopefully buy a search and rescue drone. Uh, in which we've had several times we could utilize them. Obviously with the, uh, Owen Gader case, our own drone would have sped up the process. And, you know, having a, a small autistic boy lost in the woods is, as everybody knows, very dangerous, especially in the bodies of water. And most recently, we've had incidents where, you know, I know they're animals, but people's pets have taken off on them. We spent a lot of time trying to find dogs in the woods. And we enlightened them with their owners. Thankfully, both, uh, pets that ran off were found and still healthy and good condition, returned back to their owners. But one of them was out there for what, three weeks?
Uh, thirty-two days?
Thirty-two days. It's quite a while. That type of rapid response and deployment of a device that could help us secure somebody quickly is, uh, worth its weight in gold.
We do that beginning of the month. Opera, opera stuff, so.
April first will be the time we're gonna be doing it. It's our first Monday meeting.
I called the vendor, see if they had a, uh, a promotional video. So I'm working on getting a video. Hopefully, we can get something to, to show.
Okay.
Not a promise, but I'm, I'm trying.
Yeah.
I did some research on it. I do, I am a licensed drone operator and, um, uh, is a, a very good drone. Um, and the technology, I agree, is, uh, something that would be very much, um, beneficial to a small rural community that has, uh, lots of woods and, um, has a potentially longer response time for state police to arrive and that might have that equipment and, um, with the ARPA funds that we have available, I think it's something that we should very much consider.
I agree. I think it'd be good.
We'll take that up with the rest of the opera. Requests on April first.
Okay. April Fool's Day?
Yeah.
You can come right, on right after cemetery commission. You're welcome.
You'll be announcing the winners of the speed contest?
I will.
On April Fool's?
With mail-in citations. Yeah, I'm gonna need a, uh, plate reader that hatched it all.
Anything else, Brett?
I think that's it. I mean, it's, uh, business as usual. Uh, we've had a few serious incidents, one I just covered. And, uh, everything else has been, you know, pretty much routine. Hate to use that word, cause no calls routine, but, you know, we've been keeping up with the calls and Kevin and I have been, uh, out straight on certain days. It was one day I just went from call to call to call. It was kinda crazy. Not a good day. Mostly medicals that day. But as a first responder, I respond to all of those. Unless it's, uh, you know, a cold or something like that.
Got any callouts after midnight?
Yeah, I've had a few. Um, I had call out on my day off. I had to call out for the, uh, young man up at the camper that was doing the shooting. That wound up being, uh, three AM. Matter of fact, I think I called you. For bail.
Bring it in.
I think that was about, what, two-thirty in the morning?
Yeah.
I figured I'd be waking you up. I didn't realize you were already driving over to the state police barracks.
Nope. Anybody else have any?
Nope, I'm fine.
Questions, you all set, all set?
Back to you, baby.
Thanks. Stop Kevin Curry.
Give me some info up there on, on the, uh, safety complex. Have no safe way to get out and change the light bulbs or the ceiling fans or anything, and this would work for both departments. Right now, the fire department, there's fourteen sets of fluorescent bulbs that are out. They have no way to change them. So I don't know if there's something that ARPA could look at or you can get a good use of, it's around, around six thousand dollars.
Six thousand?
Six, yeah.
It can only be used like on pavement, concrete. Can't do the flagpole.
You're drying, aren't you?
How tall does it go? I gotta figure out how to, I'll use my drone to paint it.
Where would you get this? Where would you get one?
Um, United Rental sells them.
Have anything on this?
April first.
Add this to the April first list. What else? Oh, you're doing with the sand and salt.
As long as it,
As long as nothing.
You haven't run out yet?
So, plenty in the shed and I still have some body left, so.
Okay. All right. Next up, Department of Agricultural Cultural Resources. Inspector of Animals.
Yep, uh, the current inspectors are Tina Lindsay, who's also the animal control officer, and Tracy Barely. Uh, they've been the inspector of the animals since I've been here, so it's the board just to nominate them again. And they would come in and sign, and I would notarize their signatures. Send it over to them by April thirtieth, or, excuse me, April first, and then they'll send them their certificates that it's good until April thirtieth of the following year.
Motion to approve both you, Lindsay and Tracy Barely.
To move?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have to sign anything, right?
No.
Municipal fiber grant?
Um, so a few meetings ago, I had asked if we could, um, get an estimate for running uh, fiber, uh, between, uh, the municipal buildings. Um, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the vendors, um, ComTract, um, said, well, why wouldn't you use the, um, uh, municipal, um, fiber grant, uh, which rewards up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? And Ocam would be prime, uh, to receive this. Um, I did contact, um, ComTract and Phoenix Communications,
The website.
Um, who does, um, fiber installation. A meeting with, uh, uh, Phoenix Communication tomorrow at, um, ten thirty or eleven, uh, sorry, eleven-thirty, um, just so that they can see the buildings, um, the distance between the buildings. Um, I heard from, uh, ComTract today who said that, um, uh, to prepare the budgetary scope of work that you can utilize for grants a bit, we do not need to do a field site survey or internal building pathways. Um, so there, I offered to meet with them as well. Um, but, um, uh, they're working on their, um, grant proposal or their cost estimate. Um, and I did also reach out to the superintendent, um, because we do own another building in town. Um, and, um, they have their own internet drop, their own server, all of that. Um, but, uh, it was recommended that, um, if you're, if you're running a half a mile of fiber and you're passing one of your buildings, why not drop it at that municipal building? You have no idea what in the future if we would wanna have, let's say, cameras on our property, um, to have that drop there. So, um, the superintendent connected me with her Director of IT and Building, um, Maintenance. And they're both, um, seemed to be on board and offered to, uh, meet, uh, if we had any further questions for them. Um, so I would imagine by the end of this week, uh, we will, um, get, uh, two, um, cost estimates or proposals that I would propose that we send to, um, our grant writer. I can, um, help, uh, continue to, continue the write-up that I've done. Have them add anything that they think we should add, uh, and we could submit it before the, um, the April deadline. So if we could put that on next week's agenda, just in case, um, we get the proposals by then.
Who are we using for grant writer?
Um, the one that we, we currently use.
Okay. Strategic?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Only because we've not really engaged, um, CMRPC at this point. Um, and so.
Okay. Are you gonna use Blythe?
I, I think that's, I only know of that one name.
She's one that's done a lot of the work for the police department.
Yeah, I don't, does that company have other people that they would?
Other people with specialties and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think she's assigned to Ocam, isn't she?
She's, uh, she has been assigned to Ocam.
So hopefully, they would say, oh, we've done this grant a million times, uh, and they would pick, that, pick that person.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I'm, again, April, the first or second week of April is the deadline for the grant proposal. Um, so hopefully we'll get that back in time.
Twenty-fifth will be our off meeting. The budgets.
Yes, yeah, we could put it on the budget meeting.
March twenty-fifth.
And I'll, I'll push both of these companies to have their estimates in so that we can then, um, get it to, um, the grant writer.
Okay.
Uh, it also covers, um, infrastructure, software, everything related to this.
Oh.
Uh, and I also checked with the library. Um, there was a question about whether or not there's CW Mars. Uh and I also checked with the library. Um there was a question about whether or not their CW Mars um. Interferes or it does not, they have another drop just for internet. So we have internet, 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 um in all these buildings that we'd be able to have one internet. Maybe with even a higher bandwidth.
Yeah.
Um to connect all, all buildings. So. We'd save money on that and on the um uh routers that go with all of them.
Yeah.
Um that we might be able to invest in um wireless extenders, because this room, the internet. Comes and goes. Um and so um with some of the cost savings, looking at some of the technology upgrades.
Yep, that's fine.
Next up is the library roof. Not here for the library.
Can tell you a lot about the library roof. I might have been the one that triggered this by saying, and somebody needs to look at the library roof.
Oh.
But I.
I can blame.
There, I have no uh.
Right, skyline engineering, look at the roof. Overall, in good condition. Needs about four thousand dollars in repairs for missing a compromised slate.
Most expensive color, cut, and size. Nothing was spared.
We should just go with Ocam green.
Oh, and they're gonna clean it also. Library's building maintenance budget for this year is four thousand six hundred and fifty. This is at least sixty five hundred, four thousand and twenty five hundred.
Yeah.
So.
I think with the prospect that this was going to be uh uh tens of thousands of dollars. Um and at least I was thinking that this was gonna need to be an ARPA. Come April first, I think this would be an appropriate um ARPA investment.
Yeah, I would be comfortable taking that out of the.
Yeah.
Top for funds and get it done.
Because there are, I believe there's issues um with the window. And maybe if they, if there could be some use of the maintenance to address the window uh water damage.
Yeah.
On that back wall.
I looked for that for about five years.
Coming in somewhere.
It's coming in somewhere. Some of the, does this, they'd say that they're going to uh purchase the. Susan Turnbull, you are, you spoke to me. Susan Turnbull, ten eighty nine New Braintree Road, former library trustee. Does this um. Say that they're going to purchase new slates, or are they going to expand a valley to obtain existing slates, or? Where are they getting their slates?
Repairs for missing a compromised slate and some additional masonry work.
Yeah, I guess.
So, that answer your question?
I would say ARPA would be appropriate for this one.
Then on for April first.
April first. I was surprised it was coming in as low.
Yeah.
As it has come in, because I've heard, you know, people saying, we've got to be careful, we've got to be careful. So dangerous and it's gonna fall apart and we're not gonna be able to get the pieces. So I said, that's good.
That wasn't me.
Oh, okay, wasn't you?
No, I don't think so. Oh, oh, I mean, I, oh, does it say quarter?
No, it doesn't.
I mean, it's probably worth saying that um. The overall, it's getting tighter and tighter and tighter. And we're only at the very preliminary phase. Um and um. The um challenges of retaining and recruiting. On the, the um salary structures that we've had, uh is only gonna get harder and harder and harder. Um and I think as long, it, we need to say that as many times as we can, because um the budgets are gonna get much, much harder.
It's gonna be very tight this year.
And it only gonna get worse, I think it's future years come down.
We've spoken with most of the departments in town. We just have a few luck that we haven't spoken with. And they're scheduled for March twenty fifth for Historical Council on Aging Board of Assessors. In the fiber grant program, which we're gonna be discussing, and then we're definitely gonna have to start looking at. The money we have that's coming in to start planning what we're going to do about salaries.
And I think it's also important, my understanding is that the wage study wasn't implemented or fully implemented. Um from a few years ago, that said, highlighted that we were below market. Um and um.
Which means that the prices have gone up.
Yeah.
If we were below, then we're, we're seriously below again.
That doesn't mean we haven't tried to do anything.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Tried to do a three year plan to get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything moving ahead, but um we've done the best we can with what we've got.
I'm just questioning whether what we've got is enough.
It may not be, because we have no idea what the school is coming in at.
So I, I did attend that uh public hearing. Um and so um they did present um. What they, they approved the budget on, on last Thursday.
Okay.
Um, we haven't, have we received anything from Pathfinder?
No, they just had their meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, it was Wednesday, and they did, um actually, and Paul uh came to the meeting.
All attended, yep.
Um uh I know New Braintree got theirs, and I believe it was a forty four thousand dollar increase. Um from last.
You gave me the.
For, for New Braintree.
For Pathfinder?
Pathfinder.
Okay.
Was forty four thousand dollar increase.
I didn't bring my paperwork. Paul did give me.
I was trying to remember what it was.
I think I got it.
For New Braintree or for around Pathfinder, oh, I don't know.
I have that.
But for. Ocam. From um Quavon, which the um public hearing, um first time I had ever attended. Uh Cheryl Duval is fantastic at um budget presentations.
She knows her numbers.
She sure does, and, and she's retiring this year, so.
Is she?
Yeah, this is her last year. So I believe Ocam is looking at a five point five eight percent increase. Um this year.
Think it came out to like an increase of a hundred and forty four thousand five hundred roughly. That's how much more we're gonna be paying over, over last year's on this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Which will probably. This isn't the final.
Right, it, it'll change at least two more times.
And it depends on how, how the state budget goes through, you know.
Right.
And this is the third um time that they've given a proposed number. It started at um. Forty one million, five hundred and twenty five thousand, and it went to forty million, sixty one thousand. So they, this is their third pass at it. Um so they definitely eliminated things um from their first two.
Yeah.
I know our required local contribution has gone up quite a bit.
His meeting, when he went, attended Pathfinder.
Thank you, Paul.
I was just hoping we wouldn't have to use free cash again to balance the budget, which is never a good thing. And maybe just might end up having to do it again this year.
Pathfinder for us is an increase of twenty five thousand, three hundred twenty one.
No. And we have, I mean, I, I think we have at least three or four kids that I know of that go to Pathfinder. Does it say what our number is?
The attendance for Pathfinder was uh an increase of one student. And I think, I think our increased dollar wise is like twenty two thousand, seven hundred over last year.
Okay.
Yep, we had thirteen going there, and now we got fourteen.
Wow, so. Glad we have that option.
We have no Pathfinder kid who can teach us there.
Next thing's actually correspondence, so I'm gonna put that on the correspondence. The minutes correction request. We go to admin, assistant reporter on school budget discussion, town administrators, et cetera, et cetera.
Um, I think last month I attended a dispatch meeting at Rutland Regional. Um with Hubbardston, Barry, Rutland, where was invited, they did not attend. Uh at the end of that meeting, Warren, excuse me, Warren, not where, Warren. At the end of the ma, uh the end of that meeting, the town administrator of her Hubbardston uh spoke with myself and the TA for Barry. Asking, you know, if we wanted to get together, or if you put something together, um just to discuss. School budget, um which it did happen, and I sent the board an email. Last week when I attended the meeting, which was held in Barry. It was the town administrators of Hubbardston, Hardwick, Barry, held in Barry. The reason of the meeting was to discuss and understand the struggles each town may, may have with the proposed school budget. Hardwick and Hubbardston will be proposing a lower budget than what the school has asked for. At their town meeting, they stated that they have the support of their Board of Selectmen in FinCom. Barry's TA, although new in her position, said Barry would likely pass it, as they always do. I made it clear. Although they all know by now that I'm not the TA for Ocam, but that I was happy to attend the meeting. To stay informed and bring back any information for the Board of Selectmen. The goals of these ma, meetings is not to. Not support education, but to come together opposing the unrealistic budget proposed. That none of our small towns can afford without dipping into free cash or ma, make and address the cuts that will impact the services. Of our taxpayers. Ultimately, Hardwick and Hubbardston were. Really looking to do a united front of, you know, maybe you can all say no. Clearly, that is at the end of the day for each town to um make the best decision. Again, I went there, gather information. I think it's important to stay connected and to stay um. Informed with your neighbor in towns, towns that you're in agreement with, as in dispatching or the school, but. I bring back any information provided and give it to the board.
After that um email was received, I did send an email requesting that this be on the agenda. Uh for this meeting. Um the reason why I did that is um. The town of Ocam, uh the select board uh received um an offer to attend. Uh a meeting of, with the uh school department. Um all um boards attended. Um New Braintree, every one of their members attended. Um I represented, I was there for Ocam. Uh as was the administrative assistant. Um New, uh let's see, Hardwick, I believe their town administrator. Hubbardston, their town administrator, Barry, um their um, at least one member, actually, I think two members of the select board were present. And I found um the school board, the school department gave a very um. Respectful uh presentation. Uh two towns in particular, Hubbardston and Hardwick. I personally found them to be disrespectful in creating hostility. Um and so it, it was not surprising.
No.
That the two towns who were suggesting having this impromptu meeting, not a regularly scheduled. Regional meeting of towns um approached um the other towns um to get together. Um interestingly, none of them showed up at the public hearing. The, the um same day that this impromptu meeting was held. Um and I have concern that um. You know, these two towns are clearly trying to create an us and them mentality. Which existed in Ocam several years ago, and I don't think it did anybody any good. Um and New Braintree, by the way, their Board of Selectmen received this offer. And in a, in a public meeting voted that they were not going to participate because of. They felt as though there was a process to do this. Um so um. Uh the chair uh wrote me an email explaining that um uh, you know, this is not unusual. Um that uh when there are requests that come in, uh the task falls to the chairman. Um uh that um the chairman can certainly, who uh according to the job description. Uh reports to, the administrative assistant reports to the chair. Um. And past administrative assistants have it, have attended regional meetings. It's been the standard for years. Although I, I will say that I have everything that's in the policy manual, that's in a notebook in there. There is nothing. That relates to this. Um the chair absolutely has the responsibility. To address um routine matters uh between meetings. We have been meeting every single week for, I think, three months. Um in a, specifically to this matter, um I think it would have been um. Appropriate to let members of the select board who are duly elected. Um to know of this meeting and an offer to participate like happened with the um. Public hearing, meeting with the select board, um and the um. Uh the previous meeting with the school department. Um uh. And um, and the question is, do we want to be associated with this um. Group who is intentionally stated that they are trying to corral all of the other towns. Uh to vote no. Um I, I think that's taking a, that's strategizing. Um which I feel as though any um. That's a, that's a decision that the board should be making, that we're gonna participate in strategy to um. Uh subvert the, the process that the school board clearly has open, has been open with us. They, they've um asked us to work with them. Uh they've offered to attend meetings. Um and um I just have concern that um these two town administrators who spoke. For ninety five percent of the meeting with the school department um. Are uh not giving the school department a fair chance to make a case. Um and. Uh I wouldn't be surprised if they're proud of the fact that they've got four of the five towns to get together. Um just the mere attendance at that meeting, um I think um makes a uh. Says that we're concerned about the um, the uh. Approach that the school department is making, and I don't, the board has not said, there's been not, been any discussion at this board. That we believe that they are, I forget what you put in your email. Um.
Oh.
Un, un, uh.
Like create.
It was describing unreasonable, the unreasonable budgets of the school department. I think that's a, a characterization that we have not made. Um and, but I believe Hardwick and New Braintree believed, or not New Braintree, Hardwick and Hubbardston probably believe that. But um we haven't, we haven't stated that, and um it's not our posi, public position.
And just to be clear, that when I did attend, not once did I, you know, lead that to believe it was more listening. You know, I'll bring anything back to the board. Uh the TA for Barry was on the same boat. I mean. Barry, you know, they're all aware who sits on the, on the Board of Selectmen and Barry. Um so I. For me, it was just more informational, bring it back to the board. If the board moving forward wouldn't like for. Me not to attend these, by all means, it's, you know, you're. If the board moving forward wouldn't like for me not to attend these, by all means, it's, you know, your prerogative.
We're talking about two different things. There's been a regional meeting.
Yeah, that's separate.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's what she attends and she's gonna continue.
But that was not a regional meeting.
Did you know that when you went in there?
I I knew it was just a, like a, a for, yeah, to get for the budget, but I mean, it was just informational.
Once the meeting started, there's a difference there.
Well, I I believe the administrative assistant said that she was approached during the dispatch meeting. To say that they wanted to get together about.
Discuss the budget.
There's a forum, there has been a forum for that. Boards of selectmen have been invited.
Participate last year and if you recall.
In.
That particular meeting.
So moving forward only school budget meetings?
So I I don't know about.
They did this last year.
Oh, where they, the school board invited all the towns.
We took a vote and said, we're not gonna take part in that. It's ridiculous.
It like that informal group of the towns or with the school department?
No, no, with, no, not with the school, always with the school department.
Right.
For what you're talking about.
Yeah. So and that's, that's my only point is, having participated in that meeting. And where New Braintree and Oakham had to fight to say a word and then were cut off by these two town administrators. Um they have an agenda and and I don't believe that that agenda represents what we have presented.
Right.
At this point.
Right.
Uh so, but I I do think in general, regional meetings that are about regional problems that we've talked about. Are very appropriate, but I do think um, you know, much like. The board was invited to attend that meeting of with the school department. Um and I attended a- and the Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant attended. I'm just curious, where's the dis- where's the opportunity for the full board to hear about these meetings? And then decide if we're invited to attend, or if it's just gonna be the administrative assistant?
It's gonna be what it's always been. No boards of selectmen have attended the regional meetings. Those are all the, the TAs get together and they hash out different things, go back to their boards and present, and the boards vote.
How many of those, uh since I've been here, I'm only aware of one, which was the dispatch meeting.
You prob- since you've been here, you have probably only one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's this time of year that they finally get to do this. Ashley went to it a couple of times.
Went to the mall.
So it, would it be inappropriate for the Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant to let the board know every two weeks? Hey, there's this regional meeting coming up. That way, if we have questions that we'd like her to address during that meeting. So I think some more transparency on these meetings. It it came up on a Monday or something, whatever that.
No, I did inform the board. It was initially for March seventh, it got pushed back and then it was held the following week, so I did.
I just, I remember something.
I did say, I don't know, it was a meeting with, it was in a meeting or, you know, off of a meeting, but I did inform and then it had gotten pushed back.
Right.
And rescheduled to that.
It it was at the end of one of the meetings that you had said.
So I I I did inform, so I just wanna clear the transparency comment that I'm not, not being transparent.
As a matter of Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant reporting on these, which I think are great, that there's a, a line item here. But things like that, things that you're participating in, things that you're working on, because there are many more import- there are other important things that we're not getting done. Um like minutes. We, I don't think we've had any minutes approved in January.
Nope, none.
So when, so if, like, you know, I attended the school board public hearing meeting. I attended as representative of the town. I don't know if you attended as representative of the town, but that would be, I think, a duplication. So if there is opportunities where a member can represent. So that the administrative assistant can also work on other priorities that might be missed. Um you know, I, I, we look at um the open positions, um which is later on in the agenda, but. Um you know, there's, I I feel like um the town uh accountant has only been posted for three months. Out of the last fourteen months. We're, we're not gonna get anybody um when it's not posted. Um and so I don't know if, if the board is doing a good enough job ensuring that. We're on top of all of these things when we're spread, we're spread out so thin.
We're spread too thin.
Mm hmm. So that's what we prioritize.
Every single one of us. Okay.
Paul has a question.
Oh, Paul. Uh Faro Sherigan from Gaffney Road. This meeting regarding the school budget, okay, which initiated by Hubbardston, this is deja vu. The towns have all been through this before, okay, all the select boards, all the finance committee members have met in Hubbardston. Uh it is a public meeting, so even though the administration from Quabon wasn't invited, they were there. It was like three hours of total waste, okay, and. The school committee and in the school administration of Quabon is very open, okay. I think, I think their communication's been very good. Everybody can understand what can't be afforded. Hubbardston has an increase of like over thirty students as of last October, okay, they, they're taking the biggest hit. On, on their assessment. And of course, they would love everybody just to, you know, line up and get behind us and. Tell us that the school committee is crazy, but it it can't be, all right? The, the problem with the cost of education again deals with the state, it deals, deals with. What, with uh, you know, mandatory local contributions. Hubbardston doesn't understand any of that. I got into a big battle when I was on a finance committee with the town administrator and I basically told him to grow up. And just start planning on how he's gonna pay for it, because he's gonna wind up paying for it, even if it gets diverted down the road. We've been through that. We've had like four town meetings one year, okay, finally in December.
Yep.
The secretary of, you know, primary and secondary education just said, pay the bill. So the best thing that Oakham can do, we know Hubbardston's gonna refuse it. Probably Hardwick's gonna refuse it, okay, it'll go back to the school committee. Let them deal with it. You don't even have to be involved. You know, it's no sense of making bad feelings. Everybody understands where everybody is. So again, as a resident, I would just say, let them fight it out, stay on the side and just watch everything go.
Sounds good.
I think you, you went to the meeting that night and we had all, all the committees there in Hubbardston. I mean, it was awful.
It was terrible.
And and Hubbardston has never really done much for Oakham, okay, they've asked for.
Oh, they were worse than that, just not having.
The few times that we've asked Hubbardston for help, we got nowhere with Hubbardston.
On big no, no, we're, we're fine, we're gonna do it this way and we can't help you.
So I know this is your first time around, but I'm just telling you, the town of Oakham has gone through this whole thing, it's deja vu.
I've been here since two thousand and five and I'll tell you, I was unimpressed with the way that Oakham. Was represented as we fought the school department for all those years. And I felt like we've moved in the right direction, uh and I, and I think this, the school department in the last two or three years. Um has really um been responsible and respectful of the process, understood. Um our constraints a- and I just think that that particular group, that what they're trying to do on this particular issue. Is not the, not what we should be part of.
No, I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
I I do take exception though, that you don't think we've been well represented. During budget time with the towns and like that, because Paul used to fight it every year.
I don't know what you mean.
When he was in finance committee.
Oh, I I didn't say we were not well represented.
You said you were unimpressed with the way.
Meaning, meaning the way that Oakham vote no, vote no on the budget. A- and then there was this anti, the parent, they were, people were upset that the parents were being brought into the meeting. There was an anti-school sentiment in, in the town meeting. It was the taxpayers versus the school. Um and we've, we've moved away from that. We, we are now trying to work together. Um and um I think it's the wrong direction to be corralling the troops to go in unified. To say no. That's a strategy that they have that we haven't voted on. Our finance committee hasn't made that recommendation, nor has the board.
No. No.
What, what's actually needed at this stage in budget really is, is to have the accounting firm. Put together what the forecast of town revenue was. That's the picture of the puzzle that everybody's.
Gonna need that.
And that'll, that'll help make a lot of decisions.
It will, it will.
So we're not attending any future with that group. I understand the other stuff, um but that, I was concerned about that.
Yeah, no, I. Does the board have any new business?
Oh, if there's please, excuse me. Look. If I may, still under that slot.
Yep.
I just want to uh inform the board that I have completed the second portion of the mass certified public purchasing um official. As of yesterday, so um completed uh. Contract and overview and then design and construction and I will be starting the last portion, which is supplies and services for the procurement process. There's that.
Good. Somebody knows how to do it.
When's your next class?
Um it starts la- at the, at the beginning of next month of April.
Oh, April.
Mm hmm. How many days?
The, it's self-paced for five weeks, which I do all on my own personal time, even though it's, you know, town um or. For work purposes. Um so I do that on my own and then there is just, oh, there is a. One day webinar next Thursday from eight to four for the webinar portion of the class that I just completed that. In order to be able to download the certificate for that portion, I do need to attend the one day webinar via Zoom.
Did you take the webinar two weeks ago on this?
Oh, the procurement, yeah, but that through MMA, but this is for, through this um.
She could have it.
I didn't. I I do think though that it's a wage and hour issue. It's work related, it should be work paid.
I agree. I was gonna ask that question, yes.
Hundred percent agree. Nothing but nothing.
Yep, yep. It's something, I mean, Oakham needs a procurement officer and we need somebody who understands the ins and outs. And um so we don't get in trouble and we don't have people questioning um that it was done properly.
Exactly, because I've already asked her questions about procurement and she's come up with the answers from taking these classes, so it's well worth her time.
And again, this was a, this was a capitalizing on the pilot program for one free designated per town. So these classes, each class is about, you know, anywhere from six to nine hundred dollars and then the grand um exam, which is. More, so this was all free at no cost to the town.
Which is nice, except it's using your time. And which eats into her time for other things.
That's what I said, we're spread, spreading too thin.
We're, we're spread really very thin. And and it's a good use of her time.
For their procurement, absolutely, yeah.
Not only that, it's in her job description too, so.
Yeah.
Was in Ashlyn's job description. Might have been Carol's at one time too.
Oh, yes.
Anyway. That it.
Mm hmm.
New, new business for the board. No.
I don't have anything.
I don't either. Okay, old business.
Okay.
This is you.
Um I spoke with um Austin. The Gannaway.
Town of Rutland?
Yep, um town of Rutland uh this afternoon. Um and um I have some notes somewhere, um but he uh. Existently, town of Oakham, uh this might surprise people, is in the same exact boat. As um Rutland is. They actually don't have a um personnel manual. They're not on time in attendance with Harper's. They're in the process of becoming on time in attendance. Um they don't have uh processes, apparently according to Austin, when physicians um go up, they don't have processes for um. Uh his involvement uh in approval. Um and uh their HR professional is thirty two hours. Um the board asked me or authorized me to talk with him about their potential interest in doing an IMA. Uh with Oakham uh to share um HR support. I said between zero and five hours, five hours at the most, maybe ramping up. Um and um he said honestly, uh he talked to his person, she's very much on board with it.
Oh.
Um he is going to put something in writing um to send to us. He has not uh formally spoken with their board, uh which he will do. Um but um he was thinking like two, maybe two hours a week. Um that they would either build that into her current hours or add that to her current hours, but she's working on. What we're working on. Um and so like when you're dealing with Harper's and you're having to do all these meetings. If she were doing the meetings representing both towns, it kills two birds with one stone. And they're working on how they allocate um time off and and all of that. Um so, and I think with the potential bylaw changes that might be discussed in the future. Um having an expert like that to help us um would be a benefit.
Yeah. So he's gonna write something up and give it to us.
Yeah, okay, yep.
I don't see any issue with their board.
Okay. I mean, it's not like it's overtime.
No, no.
So. And with all the changes in, you know, wage and hour and. HR policies and recruitment challenges and retention challenges, this is a position that every town who operates. Needs to have somebody, uh you know, educated uh in this area, otherwise you pay a bigger price.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, next. Bylaw review.
So um we uh solicited um uh resident um participation in a. Non um zoning bylaw uh review. Um and we received one um submission during the timeframe. That we had opened, which I think was at least a month, and I believe we've received a second one since then, but two people does not make a committee. Um and so we as a board agree that um we would become the committee. Um and certainly welcome the public um to participate, but with the town meeting in June. Um I think we need to start that process or, you know, think about scheduling that process.
Oh, yeah.
Um and I, I know we're gonna be stopping the um uh budget meetings. Um but uh like to talk about um kind of a process for that review. I've already taken a look. And made recommendations. Um I think if every board member takes a look at our current bylaws, makes recommendations. You probably wouldn't take more than a couple meetings um to make recommendations for possible changes.
I went through it, looked at yours, what you had recommended. I added a few of my own ideas to it, so. When we all get together, that would work out fine, I would think, and then send it to town council to make sure it is worded properly.
I think we're ready to.
So if we could schedule that meeting, um because then there becomes the public education portion. Because what are you doing? You're changing the bylaws. Um what we're, I think we're all trying to do is make the bylaws relevant. Um and um uh enforce the ones that we're enforcing. Um potentially eliminate those that the town of Oakham no longer believes in.
Um we just need to make them very.
Or needs, absolutely. I think there are, there are very outdated bylaws in there. There are things that were created in the sixties that. The legislature since then has created a lot more laws um that supersede our bylaws.
Right.
Um so it's time for a cleanup. Um and uh so, yeah.
Yeah.
So when would we, um probably needs to be a meeting uh. After the next um regularly scheduled Board of.
After April first. It's gotta be after April first. We still need a special night, like, you know, every other, that we. We still need a special night, like, you know, every other that we do for budget and like that is to work on the salaries.
Yeah.
That actually, to me, comes before doing the bylaws. We, our people need to know what they're going to be doing next year and making. And that may not take just one night. It may take a couple of nights to go through each and every employee that we have.
So right now, April first is a regularly scheduled. April eighth is no longer, we're not on the every week schedule anymore because we're not meeting with boards or departments.
No.
We, we still.
We probably need to.
We still may need it.
We still might need, I would.
Plan that for the eighth.
There's so many other things still to do. We've got to open up the warrant. We've got to take in all the articles that people want to have put on for the annual town meeting. I, there's still a lot of creating, writing, and then send it to town council.
That's why I was thinking we were too late and we're getting really late in the game.
We're getting really tight for time.
We're meeting the twenty fifth anyway. We can open the warrant.
I would suggest that.
Get it open.
Right, that way we're not having to wait for a meeting to open the warrant.
Right.
Right, because we, you know, we've really got to have to get it to town council before, like we did last year. It was a little too late. For them to get to it in time to hold our meeting.
Yeah.
This would ease up their time and ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to pick a date for the annual town meeting, we could.
Well, I, I do think that that's important too, because then you backdate all the other timelines that have to be met.
You do, because then you have to figure out your two week notification, posting of the warrant a week ahead of time.
So that night, we can actually open the warrant, set the meeting date.
Mm hmm.
Now we got six weeks to do it.
Yeah, jam it all in.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, yeah.
When did you want to open the warrant?
Twenty fifth.
Of April.
Vote that day.
March.
March. That's the night we do the last of our boards.
Yep.
Okay. How many weeks do you want to give the warrant to be open?
Probably longer because we were having to add things. I think we didn't reopen the warrant or something.
Yeah.
I think we had to.
That's because it got pushed back.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, again, it goes to how many weeks backwards did you have to go before the warrant is closed?
We really would like to get everything into the town council before the middle of May. If we usually run, as we usually do in June, we usually hold the meeting, I have a question mark here, for June tenth. If you think we can get done before then and you want to have it near the end of May, other than running into Memorial Day, that would not be a problem. But again, we still have to get it through town council and that is not the fastest program we've ever seen. I'm still looking at our normal date, June tenth, eleventh, twelfth. I really hate to see it get any lower than that. The year that we had it around June thirtieth was just
too far.
Not a good thing at all. But if we aim for the middle, it would be fine. Again, I remind the board that I am gone from the nineteenth to the twenty fourth. I know I will not be back on time if there's a meeting on the twenty fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, because last year was on the twelfth, so I think you had said this.
We had it on the twelfth for the annual town meeting, which worked out well. So that would be the tenth this year.
So we open the warrant for four weeks. That puts it to the end of April.
Mm hmm.
That'll give us.
Yeah, we couldn't put it much, we couldn't put it longer than that. Because then we're going to eat into time with KP.
Right.
But I think that would be a good timeframe to do things in and deal with our, but at the same time, finish up with budgets, all the last minute budgets and salaries that we have to do, work with FinCom at to smooth everything out that we want to present and get our articles written.
And the school department has, um, asked for dates for, um, them to come meet with FinCom and the Board of Selectmen.
I saw that.
They want to meet on Wednesday, so don't they?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we'll have to start scheduling that into for them.
One of the FinCom members can't meet on Monday, so.
Yeah.
They meet on.
I thought I saw that somewhere. Yes.
Which is fine with me. I don't. Doesn't matter to me.
So we may have to meet a couple of Wednesdays in a row, just to iron out any of the little snags we might run into. So far, so far, so good. But if FinCom decides that things aren't working out too well and have to start cutting, we've got to know that early. Nobody will be happy with that.
So we'll decide that on twenty fifth.
Sounds good.
Okay, your own voting days, mail-in voting option.
So has there been any, like, where are we at with that?
Kind of agreed to do it, but we didn't vote to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
She needs a vote to do it, so.
A- and I guess my question is, is there an option to only do an early voting day? Like on a Saturday versus doing, do you have to do all or none? Do we know?
That's a good question for.
So I did email somebody like on the twenty eighth of February, and apparently I didn't put the dot US at the end of it. Um, so I emailed them again today, um, who is a lawyer, I guess, at the Secretary of State's office, asking for what are the requirements? Um, so I have not heard back.
All right, okay.
But I, I mean, I, I do think that with the two hundred requests, and I think a hundred and seventy returned. Um, and, uh, I think about thirty early voting, at least offering the early voting. Um, as an option.
Well, we did figure out we have the money for the.
Yeah, we have, we have the money for the whole thing.
We do.
But we don't have the, the people power necessarily to mail out these requests to every resident, wait for the responses to come back, and then mail out the ballots to everybody. That's my concern is there may not be a practical, unless we get help, um, for the clerk, um, to do all of that. And so if we met in the middle and at least offered an early voting day, if that's allowed, um.
Yeah, we figure that out first.
So I, I'm hoping, um, before the, on our next meeting, um, we put that down on the budget meeting.
On the.
Um.
Three twenty five.
Uh, and then hopefully I'll get the response, share that with the clerk, and then maybe the clerk can be part of that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, you got a schedule, you'll tell me.
Yeah, so we, we, I think, had talked about, or at least it was in my head, um, that we were gonna try to do some education with the public about, um, the budget before the town meeting, about the town hall options. Um, I heard, uh, informally on Saturday that that committee was meeting, um, in the next couple of weeks, the town hall study committee. Um, uh, but, um, my hope is that they're on board with making a presentation of more than one option. Um, but again, that time is just getting shorter and shorter. And then, um, you know, there's, I'm sure, strong opinions on, um, all sides regarding the town election for town clerk versus an appointed position. Um, and then what I also don't have on here is the bylaws, doing education on the potential bylaw changes. So, um, kind of fitting that into that June tenth and then backing it up.
Um, we don't have too much time left.
So now is the time we really need to be thinking about how we're gonna get all that done. So maybe on the twenty fifth.
Yeah. Why not?
What are we at it now? I'm sorry.
Whole section.
But Tom, is your committee going to be meeting sometime?
We have plenty of board meeting tomorrow. Phil and I are gonna talk about, he's working on one more section of it. Guy plans the next two weeks to have a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then you're open to having a public discussion of possible choices?
There's one additional thing we're looking into would, would be the school that came up in conversation a few weeks ago.
Mm hmm.
Want to see if that's a viable option. And if that is, that would have to be part of our considerations.
Right, I, wasn't it mentioned in your annual town report at the annual town meeting?
Uh, the school?
Yeah.
I think it generally did, but we had heard from a third party that they really absurdly saying that they may not need a school. So if that's the case, and if, if growth's gonna be nonexistent or flat for the next several years, I guess maybe you would consider doing something like that.
Okay.
But then it would be a.
Because I thought you said.
I'm hopeful to do that.
Yeah. At your report last June, I, I think you said there were like three options when he gave his report to the town at that time. And I thought we were kind of sticking with those same three options as we go forward.
Information on the, the, the center school part of it. We have some rough numbers on the new versus rehabbing this.
Mm hmm.
That's, you know, we can put that pretty quickly.
Good.
Just the other, the third option would be you have to see if that's gonna be a viable thing or whether it's really gonna happen or not.
Yeah. Okay.
When that town hall study committee was created, was that an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen?
It's correct, it was.
It, it was a board to come up with ideas of poss, you know, the possibilities and to present it, their possibilities and their final discussions to the annual town meeting, which they have done for two years in a row now.
When they're done, well, what they have to do, we have to have a needs assessment done.
Yeah.
Because all of their information is going to go into that needs assessment, which means we gotta hire the firm to do that. All the procurement stuff that you just went through.
Yeah.
That's when this kicks in.
And then we're hoping to get a non-binding sense of the town at the town meeting as to the top pick.
Yeah.
Um, of the three options.
And I don't know if we can do it by voice, voice.
You know, it all comes down in reality to what's it gonna cost.
Right.
That, that's the whole thing. And, and, you know, that's, I don't think anybody can make a decision until they know what the numbers are. Then can we as a town even afford that? We don't know exactly what, what's available for, for granting, and it is quite a bit of money out there, but it's still gonna be a very expensive thing for a town.
It is.
Yeah.
And our tax rate.
School budgets, and if we threw in another seven or eight million dollars to worry about, it would be, not that you can put your head in this here, not think about it, you have to address it.
Right.
I guess we'll have to present it and then people will have to make a decision what they want to do.
Yeah. One thing is, this building can't remain the way it is.
No, it's.
So we gotta do something one way or another.
Right, it sounds like rehab of this might be the possibly cheaper option.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Vacancies. Anyway, superintendent.
I believe that about a month ago, we received an application, um, for someone, and I'm just curious where we stand on that application.
So I did, that was the individual that was from New Hampshire. I did, New Hampshire.
Oh, okay.
I have it up here.
I wasn't sure either.
Uh, Beddington, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Uh, I did reach out via email. They are moving locally, but since then, today I received a second applicant.
So two.
So we have two so far.
And, and it, it was, as far as I can tell, it's only been posted for one month on MMA. So, uh, and that ended on March ninth.
Yep.
So, I, I mean, a, a month i- in this climate is, is not enough. Like, unfortunately, MMA is extremely expensive. Um, but, you know, are we, this is where an HR person, I mean, I do this for a living, um, but this is where an HR person for Ocam really needs to be helping to make sure we're doing what we need to do, um, to be able to recruit talent. Um, so, um, I, I'm concerned that with only two applicants, uh, and, and I was kind of, I assumed that that one applicant wouldn't have applied for a position in Ocam if they lived in New Hampshire.
Right, we were hoping you'd think about moving down.
So, um, you know, it's, it's a good thing we didn't lose, you know, the candidate still interested.
They said ten minutes away.
Wow.
Um, then we have one local.
So, um, again, with July third or fourth coming up quickly, um, I, I just wonder if we should be posting that again. Um, since, uh, it has been basically that one posting, receive the one applicant. The second posting is, I think, probably word of mouth, um, locally, um.
So where do you want to advertise it?
Well, we don't use Indeed.
No.
Everybody uses Indeed.
We don't.
And I, I guess my question is, with all these openings, why aren't we using Indeed? I mean, I set the Abbey up on Indeed a year and a half ago, and they end up hiring like fifteen people. Um, they also put a sign up on Route thirty one and got people. Um, but, um, between Indeed and I think we, we need to be pushing it on social media, using our, our Facebook page to remind people, um, that these are the opening, open positions that we have, because we have a town accountant. Um, and we have the, um, interim town clerk, the highway superintendent, potentially an assistant town clerk, um, positions that are open. And, um, unfortunately, MMA is only thirty days and you're done. Um, and, and that's just not, not enough. Um, so I really think we should be going with Indeed. It's not difficult to set up.
No, we had, we had done it.
Oh, and indeed?
Mm hmm.
So then we must have an account.
We still have it.
I've never used Indeed here.
I think Ashley, I think we did it with Ashley a couple of times.
So we might need to start over.
Yeah.
We
Yeah.
Didn't get any applicants that we accepted, though, from Indeed. That was the problem.
Mm hmm. So there's, there's a, you know, the, their pricing structure, they go out and source candidates, or you do a passive, um, where you wait for people to apply. Um, and you only pay for those you contact if you do the passive approach. Um, but, um, with, with time coming quickly, um, I don't know. I mean, fortunately, we now have a second applicant, but I'm still not sure that two is sufficient.
All I can say is if you want more atten- attention to it, you're gonna have to increase the pay.
I, I, I think this is the, the bigger issue.
It is, it is going to be the bigger issue. I think we were lucky. We got two point, two applicants for what we're putting in the paper.
Yeah.
To hire.
And I think like for the interim town clerk or even the town clerk, you know, the Barry Gazette, um, might be an option. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I can see that, that it would be.
I mean, even, you know, Ellie in her, you know, page two is most often the only place that Ocam is mentioned, but maybe in that one section, um, they could put FYI, Ocam is, has openings.
I think it was in this week's.
Was it?
I don't know if we have openings, but she has the list of openings for the election ballot.
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
That was in this week, but she, I'm sure she'd be willing to put in something else.
Mm hmm.
She's always looking for something.
Yeah.
She had clerk.
Yeah.
What's your idea?
I think we need one, but we.
We need one.
Um, but we, I think we need to, I think that would be a better one to advertise locally. I don't think we need to go on MMA for that.
I agree.
So, but I think the Barry Gazette and then using Facebook, social media to share that that position is available.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to see a vote that we need one.
Yeah.
Number one. Number two, where are we financing this from? We're already removing the admin to the PD. It's eighty one hundred dollars.
We.
You've got five thousand.
Yeah, budgeted.
Budgeted.
We didn't take a vote yet on the admin from the PD. We didn't take a vote yet on the admin from the PD.
Resigned last June.
That was a suggestion that we would talk about it this year, but we never.
Well, no, we we voted, I read the minutes. We voted it.
I don't remember that we voted it for this year.
I mean, we could always put it on the agenda.
I know I didn't go for it. Mm-mm, I didn't.
Went through.
Shouldn't have.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's in the minutes.
I'm not listed in there voting for anything. But not for, not for this year.
We can do it.
I gave my opinions last year and what I thought. Then we said last year that we would take it under consideration this year.
We said we would extend it one year, and that would be it.
And then we would think about it this year and discuss it this year.
We can do that, too. No matter what, if we pull her position out of there, she's still gonna have to do the details. Whoever that person is, cause that spreads biggest.
Oh, I agree, I know.
Thing is those details.
I know.
And on the opposite side of that is, that brings us in fourteen grand a year.
Yes.
So, you know, I wanna keep ahead of this stuff. But like I said, you you just those compositions alone is thirteen grand.
Yeah, and and, yeah, and we, um. We have to have all of our ARPA funds designated by the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did hear from Rutland that they have about six to seven hundred thousand left.
Yeah.
And they're not sure that they're gonna use it all. Do they, can they loan us some?
I was just saying, do they, would they let you share with us?
But actually, I guess their thought is potentially using it for their school assessments.
Which frees up seven.
Cash, free cash, yep.
Yep.
So we shouldn't leave any money on the table, but.
There'll be no money on the table.
But this shared service, shared clerk, even at a minimum, it could be a a trial. But potentially it could be, if there's money left over, after we look at the next ARPA funding. Um, that we may decide that it's funded for a year and a half. Um.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, we need to agree.
Yep.
That we're gonna do it.
Yep.
We've been talking about doing a shared.
I know.
Clerk for at least three years, cause we would see how much work that all of them had to do. So that wasn't, that's nothing new. It's just how you wanna go about doing it, or how we decide to go about doing it. My concern is, what kind of a background would they have to have, because they'd be doing three or four different.
Yeah, they would, I mean, you know, the the Board of Health's first clerk, we identified areas for. Better orientation. We created a a a competency checklist. Um, and so, if you train people, they can do the job. So let's provide the training, understand the needs, and I I'm confident that we can hire somebody. Appropriately, and give them the training that they need to do the job.
Cause then they would move from Board of Health to Town Clerk. Which is a completely different set of.
But.
Problems.
Uh, but what the town clerk's biggest, from my understanding. Um, is managing dog licenses, which is a task. It's, I have a check, I have an application, oh, they didn't send their, um, rabies vaccine. They, for the town clerk to be calling people chasing down rabies vaccines is not something we should be.
And census reports.
So, I mean, there's definitely tasks that are not, um, Town Clerk, um, responsibilities. The Town Clerk needs to focus on voting. Um, and, um, as those rules get harder and harder.
Yeah, they are, they.
So.
And then they would have to move from, that's two clerks, how many clerks are you looking? Assessors, now that one would be much more difficult.
My understanding with that is it's also, um, data entry.
Mm-hmm.
It's, as the billing inspector has, um, estimates on the cost of improvements. It's entering those growth numbers into a report.
And then you want one to do police details? Which is another thing that's not very easy to do. So you're looking for one person that has all these skills?
It's just as hard to find one person for three to five hours a week.
Oh, I agree.
And and so, that's where, you know, in my experience. You have to either look at the pay, or the job that you're trying to recruit for, and if you're having a problem recruiting. It's probably the job or amount of pay.
Yep.
So, um, we we keep, you know, this is the third Board of Health clerk that we've had, but it was for two to three hours. Um, and, um, you're not gonna find anybody who's interested in doing that.
But you're looking for somebody to do four, five places?
So, those are just data entry. So you can enter data, you can do all of those jobs. And while they're doing that, they can watch on video and do a minutes.
And that was the next one I was gonna come to.
I know you like doing them, but.
No, I was actually just gonna ask. On the Board, like Board of Health, Board of Assessors, would that involve the Board to be okay as their independent boards? You know, they're elected boards, so they would, you know, Board of Selectmen can't say, here, this is your person, they have to have an input.
Yeah.
You would have, you would have to ask the head person on each of these places, if the person that we choose. Is capable, would be able to handle all these different tasks that would be built before them. I don't want, you know, minutes, okay. They don't even have to come.
That's right.
They could watch it.
Yeah.
Details and assessors would be my biggest problems. Oh, I don't even treasure deciding what the treasurer wants to have done.
I mean, honestly, that that's another area that we haven't talked about, but even the treasurer is inundated and overwhelmed.
Oh, absolutely.
Doesn't have any extra.
And and we need somebody to be able to support these other people if openings happen.
Yeah, so I mean, I think there's no question that, um, on thirty hours a week of administrative support. Is not enough to manage a town. Um, so, definitely a shared clerk, I think, is is needed. Um, more hours are needed.
And you're saying use ARPA to kick it off?
Mm-hmm. I I think, as we, I mean, how much more infrastructure related? Is the basic function of a town? That we're struggling to do right now.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what ARPA was for, infrastructure.
Yeah.
Um, so. We we have to have it, um, earmarked by December thirty-first, so. We come up with that budget number, and we fund it for, you know, a fiscal year plus. Whatever we happen, if we could get it started before the end of this fiscal year. Because just the preliminary conversations we've had about the budget, there isn't, I mean. We've returned free cash of almost a half a million dollars for the last three or four years. Um, but, um. So I'm not gonna say there's not money available, um, but, um, the money is getting smaller and smaller.
Mm-hmm. The money's getting smaller, but the jobs are getting bigger.
And it's not Ocam's creating more work. I think some of this work has already been there. Um, but we did have people in a salary position who had been doing it for twenty-plus years.
Yep.
Um, and across the state, those people are leaving those jobs.
Mm-hmm.
And across the state, Boards of Selectmen and Finance Committees are getting requests to increase pay. And hours from thirty hours to thirty-five hours to forty hours, and to add clerks.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're just, um, a few decades behind in getting on board with what we had to.
Yep.
And do we have any update on the Board of Assessors? I think we got one email last week, that was it, no update?
No, I have no update. An email.
Mm-hmm.
Would said possible prospects?
Oh, yeah. It's still here.
Probably. But, I mean, to Ms. Taylor's point, that is obviously a vital position. Uh, the taxes going out, and even even the budget being approved, um.
Yeah.
So, I I just hope that the Board of Assessors. Will work with us to let us know what we can do to help, um, so that there's no, uh.
I'm sure they must have sent out an ad.
I haven't seen it, we haven't shared it, I mean, that's where we're working together, I think, on something this important.
We can check with them after their meeting.
Yeah, I think we should.
Anything else on the new, uh, excuse me, old business?
The website.
Yes.
So, um. Last week, um, uh, there was a webinar, um, that, um. Was attended, uh, with, um, one company, um. Uh, which the name escapes me.
Me, too.
Uh, and, um, uh. And then that afternoon, I attended another webinar with a company called. Revised or some, um.
Yes.
Revised, um, and I did share with the Board, um, their proposal. Um, so. Currently, we have, um, Civic Plus. Um, for those that aren't aware, Civic Plus, um, uh, has been charging us a. Nice chunk of money, um, for their basic plan. Their basic plan that had been upgraded two or three times since it was, uh, implemented, but for some reason, Ocam wasn't updated. Um, and they're in the process of forcing all of their clients, the remaining clients, to move. To their version ten and wear a version seven. Um, but it's gonna be on their timeframe. Um, so it could be the end of December, they won't tell us what their new pricing scale is gonna be. There's likely gonna be a price increase, um, with going to their new version. And looking at these three companies, the other two, for what we have right now, is between nine hundred and thirteen hundred dollars. And we're paying about forty-five to five thousand, um, and we're not getting the value for that. Um, Revised, who would be my, uh, top, uh, recommendation, um, they. They gave us a proposal, um, that, um. Puts every possible option in in the bucket.
It's a very complete proposal.
Um, and, um, they, um, it's still below. I I think I, I think I told them we paid about five thousand, I think it's. Uh, oh, so it's fifty-one seventy with everything possible that they offer, and there's things on here that we don't need. Um, but one thing on here I will point out is, um. The Ops nine. Where they would main, they would update our website for, so if the Board of, the Police Department. Wanted to change their website, wanted something posted, they'll do it. If the Board of Health wanted something posted, they'll do it. Because we don't have a webmaster.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on our team. Um, hence, we are, we have what we have. Um, but that, that was one of the options that they put in, um, and I think it was like. Eight hundred dollars or something, um, for that, but the grant, we had twenty-five thousand.
Yep.
Um, so, it, for them to set everything up, they would work with us, they'd work with the departments to create what is what we want. Um, it would include one year of the, um, the contract. Um, so that's included in the twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty. Um, and then whatever we decide to to do on a regular basis. What it includes, though, is RFP, RFQ posting, job postings. Where the people can actually apply for their jobs, and it can be routed. Um, it includes, um. Uh, the Intranet, we don't need to have SharePoint, uh, for, um. Uh, every employee, where we're paying eight fifty a person every month, it's built in. I think it's eighty dollars basically for that option, a year for everybody. Uh, versus eight fifty per employee per month. Um, so it it has so much more than what we have right now, uh, and then reduces some of the other costs that we have. Um, and I will tell you, the City of Fall River is a local, um, customer of theirs. Um, and any one of these websites, um, is, uh, a hundred times better than than ours. Um, so I don't know if, um. You know, this is not on the agenda, but I do think that we should, um. Uh, if Warren has questions, to set something up, but I, after looking at all three, Civic Plus, that other one. Um, and Revised, um, this would be by far my, uh, my top pick. I don't know where those notes were.
You know what's good on this is the drag and drop menu.
Oh, yeah, it is.
So.
Keep it simple, is is the. We we purchased a template. You're not allowed to change the template, this, you can change anything you want. Now, there are gonna be very few people that will want to be touching any of that. But we could opt in to have an expert do that sort of work. But if a board or department was comfortable doing it, they could.
They would, yeah.
I mean, they got, this guy got on a call with me, uh, with like an hour notice, and spent an hour and a half with me. Uh, going over, he's happy to meet with anybody, um, to discuss it, there is a timeframe. Um, I think he said about eight. Um, it says twenty-one to twenty-seven weeks, he told me it'd be about, um, eight to ten weeks, based upon the size of our website. Um, which, again, would be quicker than waiting until the end of the year with, um.
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus, and and we're already being price gouged, um, with Civic Plus.
Yeah.
Oh, and they also include email, an email option. Um, for everybody, um, within this, um, proposal.
Pricing is good for sixty days.
And they're willing to go back and remove things, um, in the final proposal.
That's over, and if we can make a decision.
Yeah, and and you, I think you have, you have his information, if you wanted to email him questions, I know he'd be happy to, uh, answer. And I, again, look at the City of Fall River, uh, their website, um, they're a, uh. A user, I think there was a second one that I included, that received an award. Yeah, Pittsfield, I think, was an award recipient in the, um, municipal website contest with the MMA this year. I don't know what the name of that other company was.
Munis something.
Oh, yeah, Munibit, Munibit.
Bit.
Yeah, so they, they had, so the thing that was most concerning to me. Was they do not have the capability for agenda posting. So for me, that was, uh, we can't go back.
They wouldn't put a time on it.
Yeah. They hadn't been asked.
When you you put your agenda in.
Yes, we'd have to go back to the old fashioned way. Just kidding for those, that's not my choice, I was just trying to be funny.
But I think their total price was like nine hundred dollars a year. But that's just to kind of go to show, and theirs was customizable at nine hundred. And and Civic Plus just hasn't been like upfront, we've asked questions, they can't guarantee anything.
Of course not.
Um, and I mean, I heard from others that they've, that have been upgraded, that their prices went up. Their new annual prices went up. And that's all I have. We're starting at four o'clock.
It's only eight twelve. We got through all of this. Correspondence, when we get the correspondence. Received a letter here. February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Options of executive session.
January eighth and November twenty-seventh.
November twenty-seventh. And January eighth.
But I know.
And we did respond, we did send.
Sent them draft form and then.
Entry form and then the actual ones here. And their request is that they think there should be more written in the minutes, so that people have a clear understanding of what occurred and conform to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Well, conforming to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, we do not have to have a transcript of the meeting. First of all. Everything that's in these executive session meetings are in.
I think it's a clear understanding of what was done at the meeting.
Right.
And these were our decisions and these were our vote.
And because this has been voted on, it's now public.
Yes.
The contract's available. So I don't know what more you need to know. Everything's right here. The highlights of these two meetings. And basically what they're asking for is us to back and expand upon these two meetings. On a records request, we are by law, under chapter sixty-six, under no obligation to do anything like that. I know they question time on the meetings. Um, I think one was seventy-one minutes, one was sixty minutes. And they think there should be more written with that amount of time. But the idea of the meeting is, what did we decide? Again, we do not have to have a transcript of every single thing. If I recall, one meeting was bringing you up to speed on what we had to do.
Yes.
And the other meeting was your first meeting going into an executive session for a contract. So we had to bring you up to speed on everything. That doesn't change anything. Everything we agreed on is right there. Now, the other thing is, what's different from other contracts is that the person writing minutes is the person talking. Why don't you write the minutes of the meeting while you're explaining all of these things? You know, you hit the highlights. And that's all we have to do is hit the highlights, and we did that. And you know, we've done a lot with transparency in the past couple of years, more so since you came on the board, you got us headed in the right direction. What more did, what more can we do? Really?
So is anything that we discussed in that meeting still restricted for public conversation?
No.
Okay.
No, it's it it's all public.
Okay.
It's all public now.
When when we received that email, um twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, I think.
Email was the twenty-eighth, letter was received on the twenty-ninth.
Um, on the first, I happened to respond, I think, just to the admin assistant. Um, my recommendation would be to update the minutes to include the following. Remember, Aaron Langley shared that it was his first time reviewing this contract proposal. Aaron took the necessary time to review the document and ask for clarification on many of the items. He asked about precedent on having a contract for an administrative assistant. Other board members helped to provide background on the aspects of the agreement. So I I I do think that that is relevant, that it took me a lot longer probably than it would have taken you guys who have been doing these contracts in the past. But I I was going through every single question, every single bullet asking for input.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate that it wasn't described in that way that I needed to be schooled on it, but that is the truth.
Hmm.
Um, and so personally, I feel like I'm comfortable saying that that's what had to happen. I mean, and so for
No.
For seventy-one minutes, um, it uh, most of that was me having to read it and go through every single question. And and that definitely isn't described in this um in the second meeting. Um, because that's really when I asked, reviewed all of the contract.
What was the reason we went into executive session?
To negotiate.
Negotiate a contract.
And and we did that.
And we did that.
And even though you had to catch up, I also had to catch up because I hadn't been here. So that did take time, but it was all in the negotiation for that contract.
It's also the one where you had to start the second.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's true.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's a few minutes there.
Yeah.
Uh, when we adjourned to go into executive session, there's still people here.
Hmm.
I can't remember who, but some citizen came up and was talking to you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Leo.
So the time was ticking.
Hmm.
But we weren't discussing any of these.
Yeah.
He was discussing with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, different things. And then everybody left and we could
Yeah.
Get to what we were there for, so.
And then there was that glitch because you had shut it off and then it had to restart.
Yep.
Nonetheless.
Yeah. Though, I mean, that's a little, now that we're, it's not restricted, that is a little bit more verbal explanation of why there was a seventy-one minute meeting and only apparently six sentences. Um, so, I mean, I at least want that on record that um uh, a lot of time was spent schooling me on the process.
You just read that, it's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes. Not in these minutes, it's in tonight's minutes.
It's in our minutes, so.
These are not.
Anybody has any questions?
Yeah. She was asking us to amend these, was she not? Would have met the terms.
Yeah, that was the term to amend the um minutes. We we are under no obligation by law to amend minutes.
A request to be heard. I've had my hand up for a while here. Barbara Pucci.
Yes, Barbara, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to read a copy of the letter that I sent in uh for the town public's benefit and um transparency and to have it in in the record.
Yeah, cool. Go ahead.
So on um, I mailed via first class and emailed um on February twenty-eighth to the Town of Ocam Board of Selectmen regarding executive session minutes for November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three and January eighth, twenty-twenty-four, held to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the non-union personnel for the administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen. Dear Board of Selectmen, on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four pursuant to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, I requested a copy of your approved minutes for meetings held on November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three and January eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Gratefully, I received a copy of your approved minutes on February fifth, twenty-twenty-four. After reading your minutes, I believe they lack the mandatory dear details required by the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. The Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requires that minutes contain enough detail and accuracy that a member of the public who did not attend the meeting could read the minutes and have a clear understanding of what occurred. You must beware of your responsibility because you adequately complied with the law in approved minutes for two previous executive session meetings. More specifically, one was held for the police chief, January twenty-sixth and July tenth, twenty-twenty-three, and another for the highway superintendent, August twenty-one, October second, and October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Your approved minutes for those two positions included detailed information as to what the negotiations were for, why they take, took place at that time, the questions that were asked, summaries of the answers and discussions, the amount of pay and other items to be considered for inclusion in a contract, what the funding sources would be for any increases in the details of what was ultimately agreed upon and voted on for the employment contract. In contrast, the number, the November twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-three uh approved minutes condensed a sixty-eight minute meeting into three general sentences and four bullet points. The January eighth, twenty-twenty-four approved minutes condensed a seventy-one minute meeting into six general sentences. These approved minutes for the two executive sessions for the administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen do not contain essential details required to meet your obligations of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. This letter serves as a formal request for you to correct your approved minutes for the executive sessions held on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three and January eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Said, so that those minutes contain enough detail and accuracy that a member of the public who did not attend the meeting could read the minutes and have a clear understanding of what could occurred and conform to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Very truly yours, Barbara Pucci.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
I look at this and I know what happened, that we negotiated a contract and we approved a contract. And then we approved the minutes of the meeting as written. I don't feel inclined to amend them.
I'll admit, I um need to do a better job of taking notes during these meetings um because I don't. Um, and honestly, unfortunately, with executive session, we're not recording them, so I don't, I can't go back and and refer. Um, and so, you know, when the minutes were presented, and I I don't think I had um read them until they were being presented. Um, uh, you know, I don't even know that I would have been comfortable trying to rack my brain back to January eighth if there was something relevant um that had been discussed that wasn't in the minutes. Um, and so, uh, you know, in retrospect, uh, two months later, um, or a month and a half later, I went back, thought about it, and at least recollected um, the amount of time that I spent um really understanding why we're doing it, um, what the precedent was, um, and even, um, you know, disagreed with at least one of the items um in the proposed um contract, which was clearly clearly noted. Um, so um uh, other than the um, my recollection of of the time I spent um on it, I wouldn't owe anything else to amend other than uh what I've already previously submitted.
Like, like I said, in this particular one, and it wasn't with the other ones, this involved our administrative assistant. She cannot talk, explain things, and write down minutes the way she does with everybody else, because she's listening to everybody else. Maybe going forward, in that kind of a situation.
Someone else.
Someone else on the board should take the minutes.
I agree.
You know, that way.
Yep.
We'll run into this again.
Yep.
But I think we've.
And I just want to, if I may, on my um right here on the November twenty-seventh meeting, where the, it says, the Board of Selectmen gathered with the administrative assistant for contract negotiations. In this contract, it states the pay rate and the benefits of the memorandum voted on August first. So if you do go back to the August first, and maybe I should have listed that um minutes, those bulletins are in that set of minutes. I just want to, where you could find that information that was for August first. Which the minutes had been already voted on.
So just another suggestion, your statement that you made tonight and be on the minutes of this meeting. I think minutes of this meeting could be attached to those. Because they do go together. That'll explain what we need to explain. And like I said, the copy of the contract is available for any citizen that wants it. You can actually read it.
I'm, I'll I'll stand by the um, the minutes as they are. I I don't know what else could have been put into there to explain that we're we're looking at a contract. We came up with a contract. It's stated there. What's in the contract is stated there. We have a copy of the contract that can go to anybody. So you can actually see that. I I don't know, Mrs. Pucci, what else you would be looking for.
So I'm looking for transparency with the details and the accuracy of what went into that contract and what the board voted on for that contract, the details. If you asked me, please, you asked me, so let me finish, please. I'm looking for that type of transparency um with the open meeting laws for the detail and accuracy of actually what went into that contract and what was vote ultimately voted on. So this one thing I'm looking for is transparency, and the other thing I'm looking for is compliance with the open meeting law in Massachusetts.
And and I, the the contract.
It's a contract.
The first time I received it was the first meeting. Um, so that was already created at that point. Some somebody presented that um contract.
Yes.
It's okay.
And that's in the minutes from August, did you say? The, what is?
Developments.
Yeah.
So so nothing, nothing was, I can tell you, nothing was created in that meeting, in either of those meetings. There was nothing added. Um, that was already the the draft.
Hmm.
At least that's the first time I'd ever. At least that's the first time I'd ever seen it. And all of the the big tickets like the the wages, the hours, the remote, the contract terms. I believe those were already set on August first before I joined the board. Or at least the the rate
The rates.
and the benefits were agreed upon. So there nothing was added or subtracted during either of those two meetings that I participated in.
We did make one change to the severance.
That was that was the only thing that changed was what was documented that I had expressed concern about the severance. And so there was mutual agreement without a necessarily a formal vote, there was consensus. And then when it came time for a vote on the contract, it was with that change made to the agreement.
In open session.
And
In open session.
Right, the the vote happened in open session, but we had in front of us the amended version.
Right. That's the way negotiations work.
Yeah.
If I may, can you hear me?
Lucy.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm sitting back here and I'm listening to both sides, and that's something that I usually do on a regular basis professionally. And what is very clear to me is there was a difference in treatment between the three positions that I heard. There's no question about what the superintendent's contract was discussed and everything that was disclosed. There's no question that that was adequately addressed in the minutes. The same thing was for the police chief. However, the fact that we had another individual go through a contract negotiation who's a non-union member, that treatment was not the same as the other two. That can be viewed as something that maybe there was something hidden. You raise the fact that you can't take notes at the same time that you're negotiating a contract for yourself that probably should have been thought about before and a recording of that could have been taken so that the minutes could have accurately reflected what was going on. Also, I come to the conclusion that there's a lot of pushback to complying with this open meeting requirement. I don't think that's advisable. I think it's a poor decision. I think that what is being requested is something that should be seriously considered because there are alternatives available to people that are not happy with the response that they got today. And you really don't want to open that door. I'm not threatening anybody with anything, I'm just educating because you can make a better decision once you have more information. But I think you should seriously think about correcting the minutes so that you now have a little bit more disclosure about your administrative assistance contract negotiations, the same way you did with the other two. I think that's my opinion. I understand I came in a little late tonight on the opening of the meeting and somebody was talking about seven people resigning from the town and then fire chief had to come in and and state his position about trying to correct rumors that are going on. A lot of this can be addressed adequately if minutes are taken adequately and there's a lot of transparency. But that's my opinion. I I do have the right to voice my opinion and that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody want to make a motion or or question?
I would make a motion to amend the minutes with the draft that I had submitted and read.
Second.
No. You can.
I'm not in favor of amending these, but I am in favor of including your statement to be attached to these.
And I would just say there, my recollection, there was absolutely no further substantive matter discussed in those meetings. I I do think simply amending it with this language would meet the requister a little bit. But certainly, I can attest that no one is being misled and I absolutely understand that I cannot talk and take notes. And I think it's a valid point that there was a difference between minutes. When you're the the person speaking or when it's being discussion about you. So I there's there was absolutely no intent to mislead or to provide less information than than was provided. But with no second, I I appreciate that at least this is in the minutes.
Fine.
All right. Do we have any other correspondence?
That's not Chris.
This is a complaint that came in about somebody operating a business with no business license. But that should go to building inspector.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Could I bring up one other old business? Sorry. We had a very good meeting, I think, on Saturday. Tom and Maribel, Mrs. Turnball, we're and Kevin, Fred.
Who else was there? We have Walter.
Alter, Tom Sopay.
Berenger, Karen Carljo, Randy.
Randy Packard.
Who else? Cynthia Henshaw from
Sinssusi, Joe Sinssusi. Regarding the
Good turnout.
Municipal Vulnerability Plan, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission had like ten people, all an average of twenty years old. And it was a very good, open conversation about looking at opportunities that have a financial benefit, identifying potential needs. And so they are, I'm not going to even say the twenty fifth, but they are working on finalizing their document. It does have to have a a public meeting for it to be accepted by the town. And then if we had it in in time, we'd be able to apply for grants this grant year on this MVP grant. The state person, I don't know. Okay, Andrew.
Andrew Smith.
Smith. Oh, that's an easy one. He said it's going to be approved. Basically, if you have your town Board of Selectmen approve it, it's approved. And with that, we could then submit for even if it's a central mass regional planning, do an assessment of culverts.
Yeah.
And you get fifty thousand dollars or whatever for that. We could get in this year. And I don't remember when the that particular grant closes, the MVP grant, but it's sometime in April.
Mid to late April.
Yeah, so it's going to be tight if it's on the first. So even if we had it as a placeholder on the twenty fifth.
Like that word placeholder.
It's money that we we have all put in, you know, Tom Maribel and I have put in a lot of hours on this that if we have an opportunity to get any money this year, it helps us in future for the future.
Okay.
And I must say, if I may, it was good to have some of the folks that have been around and have more knowledge than what us youngins might have, just knowing all these culverts and these things that were once were there now no longer. Any knowledge, I think that was huge for the workshop. Yeah.
So there's two other things that they're working on as part of this.
The open space plan.
And
Hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation. And those also are grant opportunities, but we're not going to push those for this year. But there'll be a survey that will go out, will at will be asked to promote for people to fill out. And a forum, which would be at a public meeting for people to come in and ask questions that Central Mass Regional Planning would lead.
And I, if I may, I was very proud to say that the guy Andrew Smith from the state was completely impressed by our roads, the fact that the highway superintendent can put together all these projects and, you know, put the project together, the cost and execute it in that all our roads, with the exception of two, are paved and all done. He was blown away. He pretty much said, what's the secret? How do you do this? So well done, Kevin and the Highway Department. I I just thought that for someone who sees bigger towns and
Bigger problems.
Bigger problems and more diverse, the fact that he was so impressed by something like that, it's almost like he hadn't seen that before or at least very minimal.
Minimal.
So I I mean, he was, he really, I feel like he wanted to take Kevin to the side and pick his brain and send big shoes to fill for the next guy. So I I I thought that was a proud moment in our town.
Yeah, congratulations.
Same for the retirement party.
It was.
And that's what they said.
Because we can't provide anything, so that was your pizza.
That was the party.
That was this retirement. Well, I think that that comment was definitely, you know, I I thought it just felt proud for someone who doesn't know our town, doesn't know the employees, it wasn't biased by any means, it was strictly on the facts. And and like I said then, and I say again, it's not a matter of just doing the physical work, it's having the knowledge and the capability of doing the behind the scenes and the paperwork to obtain those big opportunities to assure money so these projects can get done without the funding, you can't do any of it, so.
And I don't think I specifically mentioned Lucy, but Lucy was very involved in the meeting and so I think it was great. The turnout was better than I expected and it was a positive conversation.
Yeah.
I thought I thought it was very well done, very well received.
I mean, if I had to give up a Saturday for four and a half less hours, a sunny Saturday.
We all said we were only going to stay a few hours.
I only
Some of you did.
I only came for the pizza.
You ate all the cookies.
Hey, listen, I had to stay.
Did they did they replace the paper plates and plastic?
I haven't, but I I will.
No, no, Central Mass Regional Planning that they would.
Yeah, no, not yet.
Just don't let Lucy know that.
I'll replace the paper, the paper towels that
From downstairs. So the the food place didn't provide any of the things they were supposed to.
Like plates and napkins and silverware.
I was wondering how I got a metal fork.
I washed them.
Come from downstairs.
No, no one would do that.
That's what I figured. Yeah, it was very good. No, I was very impressed by the metal fork. I said, wow, it's not plastic. Pizza was very good.
I'm done. I would move it with your turn.
Second.
All favor.
I.
Hi.
Eight forty seven.
Eight forty seven.